All right, let's call the village board meeting to order. It's November 23rd, 2015, 7:03 PM. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Abernathy, President Kim.
Here.
Norton.
Here.
Rikus.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Semple.
Here.
Very good with -- will those that are able, please rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, that's live. Also, we have the streaming folks. Welcome. Tonight, we have a fairly light agenda, but certainly not short on wonderful things to talk about. First, we're going to immediately get into the storm report. We'll hear from staff about the status of things around town. We will hear a presentation on parasetic acid later on, a very interesting presentation. And then also, tonight, we are going to award our Mundaline Outstanding Citizen Award. All right? Amongst many other things. So, first up is the approval of minutes. Could I have a motion, please, to approve the Village of Trustees' regular meeting minutes from November 9th, 2015?
So moved.
Motion by Norton.
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion. My clerk, please call the roll.
Norton.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Rikus.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next up is public commentary. Is anyone here in our live audience that wishes to address the board live? Have one hand here. Anyone else? Okay. Go ahead and, sir, go ahead and give us your name and your address if you show desire.
John Reimer, 779 Lou Stern Court. I think you all know me. I'm coming as chairman of the Human Relations Commission with an idea that I'd like to propose that the village board consider. Backtracking a little bit, I've been in town for 25 years, and Mundaline has great things going on. The challenge always is, how do you let people know? How do you communicate? So, we do have the village website, we have Facebook, but most people don't go on the village website very often, or Facebook, et cetera. But people do drive up and down 45. And I've been thinking for a while about, how do we communicate things to the residents of Mundaline? A lot of the excellent things that are going on in town. We do have the newsletter that comes in the mail, like the stack of mail I get every day, like everyone else does. Maybe it's red, maybe it's not. But what we do do is drive up and down Route 45. Twenty-two thousand cars a day. And I've been thinking, what we need is a communication instrument on Route 45. And kind of what pushed me over the edge was the last Safe and Smart Police Forum, which we did at the high school. Chief Gunther did an outstanding job in presentation. I personally spent three and a half hours one day and two and a half hours the next day going to businesses, schools, banks, restaurants, handing out the very nice flyer that Colleen produced. I put up probably 100 flyers, including the library, the rec center where I work out, hopefully four to five times a week, not every week, four to five, but I'm usually there four to five times. And I put five different posters up in the rec center. And there's a regular crew that comes at regular times. And after the forum, I didn't really see anybody from the rec center, and so I said to some of the guys, I said, "Hey, did you consider coming to the forum?" And they said, "What forum?" Well, there was the poster on the front door. There was the poster going into the locker room. People don't see posters anymore. So, I brought this up at the last HRC meeting and said, "What I really think we need is a double-sided LED sign in front of the police department." It's the only public property that the village owns, and that would be a fantastic communication piece. Twenty-two thousand cars a day. I know that from being on the One World Festival Committee, that we have a traffic study that proved it's got that kind of usage. Chief Gunther already is for this idea. And I just want to tell you off the top of my head, a few uses for this sign, which I think would be a great asset to the village. Now, I deign to say, I'm not speaking for Public Safety Director and Police Chief Eric Gunther, but here are some police information pieces that I think could be on the sign. Then I'll go to village. Police information. Opportunities with the Mundaline Police Department, such as the Police Academy, forums, open houses, police explores. Amber Alert. There is no place in Mundaline where we can communicate instantly to the population an amber alert. Warning if a tornado comes, or severe storms are about to hit. You may or may not hear a siren going off. If you're hard of hearing, you won't hear it, but you'll see that sign. Driving reminders. Mundaline has the same good and bad drivers that every other town has. I will say personally, in the last three weeks, I've been almost T-boned twice by drivers running red lights while talking on cell phones. So, driving reminders, like, "Where are your seatbelt?" No cellphone in hand. Alert when roads approach freezing conditions. I have a Volkswagen, and it has a nice little program, and when it gets to 34 degrees, it beeps and it tells me, "Warning, freezing conditions." Well, if you see that on a sign on 45, you're probably not going to blast into an intersection. You're going to go, "Oh, it's getting icy." Storm warnings, curfew hours. Reminder when to change batteries and smoke alarms. I know that's more in the fire department end, but again, we're talking about 45. So, uses for the village for this sign would be things like cultural and social events that we have, which are excellent. As I mentioned before, the Safe and Smart Forum was a police HRC thing that was not well-understood informationally. But here are some cultural events that could be advertised on the sign, starting two to three weeks before the event. The Art Festival, the One World Festival, Mundaline Days, Farmer's Market, Park on Park, Santa's Hut, the Elf Factory. I know we don't have an elf factory, but got your attention, didn't it, Mike? So, there are various things we do as a village. The Pancake Breakfast, that unless you specifically know about that, it's not in your consciousness, usually until after it happens. But imagine rolling, three or four messages rolling through that sign every day that would alert thousands of people. Another thing that you might be a fan of is the village board meetings could be advertised. Monday night, 7 o'clock, it could be advertised on Sunday. I've lived here 25 years. It was about five years before I knew that village board meetings were on Monday nights. And of course, finding it was a whole 'nother thing, but now it can be found. Fire department events, the Pancake Breakfast, open house, the blood drive. I live in Lockloman, and so I drive Midlothian, I see the banner. But if you don't drive Midlothian, you don't see the banner for the blood drive. So, I'm sure there are many other usages that you're much smarter than I am, that you can figure out that I haven't. But I think it would be an outstanding use of money, and it's really the only location. It's right between Holly and Division on 45. And we all know 45 and Division is the geographic center, or at least used to be, of Mundaline. It's certainly the traffic center. And maybe even a bonus would be, as people drive down and they see this nice friendly information in front of the police department, it might just in itself remind them to drive more safely and create a positive, which we can all use, positive connotations. But a positive connotation of the police department, because here, the police department is serving the community with public information. So, I want to throw it out there. The HRC Commission, all of -- we were missing two members, but we all unanimously were supportive of this idea, and they wanted me to come. I said I wanted to come, and they said we're 100% behind it. So, I want to encourage you to think very proactively about this. I think it could be a great benefit to our town.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Very good. We'll close the floor then, and let's see here. You know, can we just, we go to the storm report before the presentation? Is that okay? Yeah? That work?
Yeah, that'd be great. I'm going, yeah, I'm going to ask Mr. Boucher to comment on the public works activity as a result of the storm. I think you all know that, what'd they say, the largest single event storm in November in 120 years. And so, it created some challenges. The wet snow created a lot of challenges that, with trees, branches breaking and causing power outages, and we had quite a few power outages throughout town. I think the numbers at the highest point was over 500 houses without, homes without power. And so, I know I was on my emails until 10 o'clock or so, and I think they had it down to a handful of residents at that point in terms of power. But I had asked Mr. Boucher to give us a quick summary of the activities and public works.
Sure. Just to piggyback on how challenging that event was, like John had mentioned, it's more than 100 years that we've seen a single event like that. And there was also a report that indicated that that single event, in and of itself, is the second snowiest November on record as well, if we get no more snow for the entire month. So, it was an extremely large amount of snow, given the time of year. And we were able to respond very effectively. We started Friday evening about 7:30, 8 o'clock, and we worked 26 hours through, ultimately terminating Saturday evening. Spent about 350 man-hours on the street, clearing snow, and then also responding to some downed limbs in the street to be able to remove those, so we can effectively remove the snow from the street as well. So, we are continuing to work on the roadways to clear some of the edges, and also clear some of the storm grates, because as the snow starts to melt, it starts to ice up near the inlets on the streets, so we're trying to keep those open. So, we're doing a lot of work on those right now throughout the rest of the week. We're also responding to downed tree limbs from the residents who contact us. We're also responding without being contacted, too. We're going zone to zone. So, we don't really need a call from any of the residents. If they want to call, it's great, we'll put them on a list. But we're also just going zone to zone and clearing anything we see in the parkway. So, we're encouraging residents to place their limbs out in the parkway as far back from the back curb as they possibly can, while still not blocking any of the sidewalks. And then we will come clear them within the next two to three weeks. So, that is where we're at right now. We've also cleared some of the pedestrian paths to provide access to the schools as well. So, we're working to still do a lot in response to the storm, but the majority of the work was done over the weekend.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Now, I have a question, because someone did call me. They have like a real large limb, because like their tree's split, so that they're going to have to contact a service for, correct?
Anything on private property that they're unable to bring to the parkway, they will have to contact.
Okay.
A private service.
Okay.
Anything in the parkway will be able to handle. So, even if they had a private tree that was so large that some of it fell into the parkway and on the road, or a condition like that, we'll take as much as we can of it up into the parkway, but then, once it gets on the private property, it's up to them to figure that out.
Okay.
We can provide them with a number of vendors, and we also have Sawville as the city's vendor, who is required, or the village's vendor, who's required to provide our residents with the same rate they provide us.
Okay.
So, it's an extremely favorable rate.
Yeah.
Given the scope of services they provide.
I think I said that, I told them that.
So.
I just wanted to make sure I was correct on that. And then we did check to make sure the school routes were cleaned first, right, for the kids?
The school routes in terms of vehicles or pedestrian paths?
No, pedestrian paths.
No.
With tree limbs.
Oh, tree limbs, yes.
Yeah, I'm worried, yeah, I'm not saying we are going to plow them. No, I meant if there's tree limbs in that pedestrian pass, we move the tree limbs.
Yes.
Okay. That was, that was my concern. Thank you. I think you guys did a great job.
Thanks.
Think it was awesome.
Yeah, I saw the emails a little bit, and a few points struck me. Some of the drivers went 16 hours straight.
Right.
Is that right?
Well, that's as much as they can do before they're offered a break. Some of them went much further into that, some of them went 20, 22 hours.
Wow.
So, there was a few drivers that were able to push through that, but at the 16-hour mark, they're authorized to say, "I just can't push any farther, can I take a break?" And we certainly, before that, if they're tired, we let them go, too, but.
Well, great job. Now, I wanted to clarify, I saw another part of an email, the, is there a limit on the diameter of the branches that can be put out?
Yes.
In front?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. 18 inches is what we can chip, so anything larger than that, we're not going to be able to take from the parkway. So, that's, that's another great point to make. If, if there's larger branches, that we'd prefer you call us, so we can figure out how to, how to address those, those that are in the parkway. And if you have private property ones, we're not going to be able to address those.
Okay. Great. Anything else? That was, thank you for that report.
Sure.
Any questions that folks have, they can just call Public Works. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
There was a news release released today, it's on social media, it's on our village website, the announcement and everything, so thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Very good. All right, let's move on to presentations and awards. Mr. Boucher, I'll let you do the introductions leading up to this.
Thank you. Superintendent Paul Cassiopa was here to talk a little bit about something we're doing at the wastewater treatment plant. And as the board knows, we are constantly trying to squeeze our operation and make it as efficient as possible. We're doing that on a day-to-day basis. And one of the opportunities that was presented to us through some of the information we've been researching was in the disinfection model we're proposing. The current method is something he'll get into, and parasetic acid is really a new, a new treatment method within the wastewater industry in the United States. It's been something that's been utilized in Europe for quite a number of years, something that's utilized in the food industry for decades now. But Paul's going to tell us a little bit more about how we're going to be able to utilize it at the water reclamation facility. Paul?
Okay. So, Adam, again, asked me if I could come talk about some of the new technologies at the wastewater treatment facility. But just a little bit about the treatment plan itself is, we're actually located along the Displanes River in Libertyville. It's a 4.95 million gallon a day capacity treatment plant. We treat about 2.8 million gallons a day, on average. So, being that we discharge onto a recreational river, we actually have to disinfect the water before it's discharged. We use sodium hypochlorite to disinfect the water, and we have some problems with that. It's, it's toxic to aquatic life, it's costly, it's difficult to maintain the equipment, it crystallizes in some of the piping, and it's very difficult. We also use, have to use chemicals to, to remove the residual chlorine from the water before we discharge also. So, last year, we completed a lifecycle cost on three different disinfection methods: sodium hypochlorite, ultraviolet light, and parasetic acid. So, some good things about sodium hypochlorite is it's widely accepted, this is something that we already use, so it's, it's not that difficult if we were to use it. But some problems with it is, again, you have to use other chemicals to remove the residual. It's dangerous to handle, and it's environmentally harmful. Ultraviolet lighting is, it's widely accepted, it's safe and easy to use, and it has a low footprint. Problem about that is it has a high energy consumption. The initial capital cost to purchase the equipment is expensive, and the actual maintenance and the cost of it are very expensive also. So, parasetic acid, that has a low ONM cost. It's an organic compound that breaks down with little residual, so we wouldn't have to use any chemicals to remove the residual from the water. The main problem that we have with it is its product availability. There's really only a few places in the United States that you can get it, and there's one in Illinois. So, why did we examine some other methods? Right now, our current equipment is at its life expectancy. Our tanks are 11 years old, and the life expectancy is 10 years old. There's 10 years. So, also taking a proactive approach to future regulations, it's possible that the IEP A could further regulate the use of sodium hypochlorite. Right now, we're allowed a small residual to go out to the river. At some point, there may be no residual. And to improve water quality, of course. So, the IEP A, or so, this last April, we started using parasetic acid for a pilot program. We decided to put the injection point prior to sand filters. And what our sand filters do is, it's an actual polishing part of the wastewater treatment process. It takes out any, any smaller particles that might have gotten through, and it gets filtered through the sand and gets sent back up to the plant. But the problem is, is with those solids that are left in the water, that actually eats up part, some of the parasetic acid. So, we found that we had to use a lot, a lot more of the parasetic acid. So, we decided to move the injection point downstream of the sand filters to our chlorine contact tank. At this point, the water is just about crystal clear, or pretty much is crystal clear. So, at this point, that using parasetic acid, we were able to reduce the amount by 75%. So, we found that actually using, at the injection point prior to the sand filters, it would cost more than sodium hypochlorite. By using it at the chlorine, or at the contact tank, we were able to reduce the cost by $5,000 a year. And this actually, we were able to use the lowest amount of parasetic acid in the nation, actually. So, at .5 ppm. So, this puts us at a, kind of as a leader of disinfection technology. So, right now, we're looking at, we're seeking IEP A approval to utilize PAA as a primary disinfection method. We're researching also different vendors to further reduce the cost. And the use will improve water quality by removing harmful disinfection byproducts from the Displanes River, also reduce the long-term, reduce long-term costs to treat wastewater. And that's it? Any questions?
Okay, that parasetic acid pilot study, okay. There was, where you were going through the three different scenarios of what we use already, then the other was the ultraviolet?
Yes.
And then, now we have the parasetic acid.
Correct.
Okay, so the middle one, you said it was a, it was an expensive setup, I believe?
Yes.
Is that what the $31,000 was? The setup?
That's the annual cost, actually.
That's the annual cost after setup?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, there. Okay, because you went real fast over that, so I didn't.
Yeah, sorry.
So, I didn't see how much it was for the acid.
Yeah, that's the annual cost, and these were actually preliminary costs. And what we found is that parasetic acid is actually cheaper to use than the sodium hypochlorite at the point that we're using it at now.
Okay. Well, I don't have a problem with that. I just didn't know if this ultraviolet would be, I didn't know if it would be more expensive in the long run. Because a lot of times, when you have a high setup cost, but in the long run, it ends up being less expensive.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
Right.
So, I didn't know if we would have that.
In the long run, this ultraviolet lighting would be more expensive.
It would.
Yeah.
But is it, it's, but is it?
Just due to the initial cost of the actual equipment, too.
Uh huh.
This is including energy usage and, and maintenance costs.
Okay.
So, if I could elaborate a little bit on what Paul was saying. When we did the lifecycle cost analysis a year ago, we did a 20-year evaluation, and these annual ONM costs built in the capital or upfront costs for any one of these three.
Okay.
So, when you see these, and ultimately, what we decided, and what we researched, was that at a 20-year breakpoint, each of these would have major capital costs, once again, to replace some of the equipment associated with each of those treatment methods.
Right.
So, we factored that into the analysis, and what you found, or what we found, is these annual ONM costs just extrapolated over the 20 years.
Okay.
The capital cost. We just spread it out over that 20-year lifecycle, and this is the result of that. When we looked at each of the three, you see the costs up there. We noticed ultraviolet was, was way out of whack, with the other two, parasetic acid. We recognized the environmental benefits, even though preliminarily looked like it could be more expensive. We wanted to dig in a little deeper, thus the pilot study over the last year. And what we were able to find was that, because we knew there could be a possibility it could be less expensive, and that turned out to be accurate. Once we were able to relocate the injection point downstream of those sand filters.
Right.
We are now realizing a cost benefit of $5,000 on average compared to our existing treatment method.
Okay.
So, it's a, in our mind, we're very excited about it, because it's a win-win. We're saving money, and we're less harmful and damaging to the aquatic life in the river.
Right.
So, it's a, it's a major find for us, and hopefully for the future of our plant.
Is the product availability going to open up, so that, that's the other thing, though, it might keep the costs up. If the product's only available by a couple of distributors, it's going to keep the cost up?
It'll keep the cost up, but we're still saving money.
Yeah.
Right now, we're still $5,000 ahead. If we changed the PAA over the sodium hypo, or just bleached effectively is what that is.
Yeah.
So, we're still saving $5,000 a year. If anything, those costs are only going, that gap will continue to widen, we'll save more money as that product becomes more available.
Okay.
Because everyone's going to see we're doing it, and it looks really cool, and every other plant's going to want to do what we're doing.
Right.
We'll be the, we'll be the second plant in Illinois to use it.
Really? Okay.
There are a small handful in this entire country using that methodology.
Okay.
So, thus, the product availability issues.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you.
I have.
Go ahead. Trustee Semple?
Do you have to upgrade any of the hardware at all for this new process, or?
That's a fantastic question, and I'll let Paul talk about that a little bit.
There would be some piping changes that we'd have to make. For the most parts, we would have had to change out the tankage anyways, but the main cost of this would be piping. The pumps, again, they're the same type of pumps that we'd be using for the sodium hypochlorite, which also needed to be replaced.
So, what are we doing tonight? This is just a informative presentation to let us know the direction you guys are going?
Yes.
You're not looking for us to give you our opinions on which, which is best?
I just wanted you guys to recognize how awesome this is, like we do. And then also, on top of that, is to, when you see.
Here it comes.
Oh, trustee Abernathy knows me too well. The capital improvement plan down the line, you may see some of these things come up when you start looking at the utility side, and some of the improvements that we'll be making to the plant in anticipation of this change. Like Paul was talking about, some of the piping network modifications we have to make, the tank replacements. Those are costly items, but like Paul said, some that we are going to have to do anyway, but some that we weren't going to have to do if we were to maintain the existing disinfection method. So, we wanted to just give you a heads up about why those changes were happening, and also talk to you a little bit about why we're doing it, because as everyone knows, you see where the IEP A is headed. We've got phosphorus right now, who knows what's next, most likely nitrogen. But then also, you don't know where the IEP A could be headed with disinfection, too. There's a lot of damage from, from the chlorides, and then also from this, the byproducts of how we have to treat our wastewater right now. So, we're kind of anticipating, being proactive in that regard, to try and head off those regulations and do as much as we can upfront. And also, it's, it's just a better idea. It's a better disinfection method.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
When you say the tanks, is that the equipment that you were referring to that is at its maximum life cycle already?
Correct.
And is by going, and I think I know the answer, because this is at the end of the process, it seems to me, from what you're describing.
Correct.
This is, using this new parasitic material is not going to extend the life This is, using this new parasitic material is not going to extend the life of the equipment and tanks that we already have, is it?
No, no.
Either now or in the future?
Correct.
Because it's at the end of the cycle?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Trustee Kim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could we go back to that slide where you said we were the industry leader? I just wanted to see, it was like on the right-hand side. Okay, so the I E P A is requesting data to establish regulation for P A A as an accepted disinfection method.
They're actually asking us to do some of the testing for them, so they can further understand the use of P A A.
They're gonna pay us?
I was just gonna ask the same question. So, they're gonna pay for that, right?
No, they're gonna let us do this.
Right.
So, that's, that's kind of the give and take with them, is, there is very little data on P A A, and they recognize it as, as an emerging technology, so they want more data.
Oh, well, of course.
We're happy to provide it if they're allowing us to continue to move forward with this as our permanent disinfection model. So, that's the give and take we have with them right now.
What, you mean they can say, "No, you can't do that"?
Yes.
Oh.
So, I could see white papers or published materials coming out of this, so if that happens, could you let me know?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Okay. I'll just, I just wanna say, I wish every Mundaline resident could take a tour of this facility. It is substantial. My first time through it, I was blown away at how, I mean, the picture doesn't do justice to how sprawling it is, and none of this is a surprise. Mr. Beauchamp, when he came aboard, what, three years ago, four years ago? Four years ago, he started some efficiency projects, and the capacity now is that it came to, you know, we're only at, what, fifty-five percent capacity now after these efficiencies you've introduced with your staff? And just outstanding. It's, but for thirty-one thousand people to take a tour, I don't know that that'll take a little bit of time, but...
We're ready. You wanna get it scheduled? Yeah, just, just let me know when you wanna start the bus.
Every Boy Scout group, I mean, it's just a great experience to see this place, and it's kind of tucked away. You don't see it from the street. It's kind of hidden back in there. But, believe me, it is a substantial facility, and everyone would be extremely impressed and proud to, to see the, this facility there. So, thanks going.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nothing else? Okay, good. Thank you. All right. There's no public hearings this evening, which takes us to my report. First up is a mayoral proclamation. I'm gonna read this, and then I would like us to do a photo op, if we could get all the trustees out in front with myself, along with the individual receiving this. All right. Dr. Esti, can you raise your hand? There he is. There he is. Okay. All right, this is a mayoral proclamation presenting Dr. Archie Esti with the Village of Mundaline Outstanding Citizen Award. Whereas Archie Esti graduated from the Loyola University Dental School in nineteen sixty-nine, then served in the United States Navy Dental Corps at the Great Lakes Naval Training Center until nineteen seventy-one, and opened his dentistry practice in Mundaline in nineteen seventy-two. And whereas Dr. Esti is a member of numerous professional organizations, including the American Dental Association, the Illinois Dental Society, and the Chicago Dentalist Society, and over the years has served in many leadership positions, including President of the Lake County Dental Society, Chairman of the Chicago Dental Society Mediation Committee, Dental Consultant Lamb's Farm, and on the medical staff of St. Therese Hospital, McHenry Hospital, and Condell Hospital. And whereas Dr. Esti has been recognized for excellence in his profession, including the International College of Dentists, the American College of Dentists, and the prestigious Pierre Fouchard Academy, whose membership is comprised of dentists who are considered to be among the most outstanding leaders in dentistry. And whereas Dr. Esti was a member of the Mundaline Vernon Hills Rotary Club from November first, nineteen seventy-two, until July first, two thousand fifteen, a service record of forty-three years, during which he displayed the highest level of dedication to our community and exemplified Rotary's motto, "Service Above Self." And whereas Dr. Esti served as President of the Mundaline Vernon Hills Rotary Club from nineteen seventy-eight to seventy-nine, and is a recipient of a Rotary Paul Harris Fellowship. And whereas in recognition of forty-three years of continuous service to our community, Dr. Esti has been recommended by the Mundaline Economic Development Commission and the Mundaline Vernon Hills Rotary Club to receive the Village of Mundaline Outstanding Citizen Award. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Mayor and Board of Trustees of the Village of Mundaline, Illinois, that Dr. Archie Esti be presented with the Village of Mundaline Outstanding Citizen Award, and that this proclamation be recorded in the permanent archives of the village in recognition of his service to our community and his profession. Proclaim, sign, and seal this twenty-third day of November, two thousand fifteen. Dr. Esti, thank you so much for all that you've done. Come on up, and we're gonna meet you out here for a little photo op and present you with this.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
So, it's... Jeez.
Got it?
Yeah.
All right. Doctor, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Shake his hand. All right.
Here, one more.
Thanks so much, all right.
Oops, I'm going out.
Hold on, hold on.
Really get us...
Okay. Okay. I'm just trying to figure out my... Forty-two years. Hey, Alex, sorry.
Say cheese.
Cheese. Got it?
Yeah.
All right. Doctor, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Shake his hand.
I did.
All right. Thanks so much. All right.
Here, one more.
Thanks so much, all right.
Oops, I'm going out.
Hold on, hold on.
Probably get us...
Okay. Okay. I'm just trying to figure out my... Forty-two years. Hey, Alex, sorry.
Say cheese.
Cheese. Got it?
Yeah.
All right. Doctor, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Shake his hand. All right.
Here, one more.
Thanks so much, all right.
Oops, I'm going out.
Hold on, hold on.
Probably get us...
Okay. Okay. I'm just trying to figure out my... Forty-two years. Hey, Alex, sorry.
Say cheese.
Oh. Sure. So, Dr. Esti, you have your family here from, some from California, I understand?
I do.
You want to introduce them here? Let's see who they are. There he is. Yeah, the guy with the blonde hair with the tan. There we go.
Yeah.
Well, certainly, I, first I would introduce my son, who is also a dentist in Lolo, Indiana, California, and his son, my grandson, and Chucky, my fiancee, and of course, Gene Wright, he used to be in Rotary, and my hygienist, Sharon Klein, and Chucky's sister Karen and her mother, Arlene, and...
Our favorite patient made it today?
(laughing).
Don't forget Teddy.
Oh, and in the corner over there is Dr. Manning. He practices as a dentist in Libertyville, and his wife, Linda.
All right. Well... (applause). Well, everyone that came from his family, thank you so much for attending tonight and, and helping to honor Dr. Esti. He's been a wonderful citizen of our community, and forty-three years, that's fantastic. Okay, let's see here. All right. Moving along, I need a motion, please, to pass an ordinance providing for the submission to electors. Okay, so this, all right, so this is item B. We had a committee of the whole meeting prior to this meeting for about an hour, well, a little, less than an hour, we discussed this. And so, this is kind of bringing some action to the board from that committee of the whole meeting prior. So, this is a motion, please, to pass an ordinance providing for the submission to electors of the Village of Mundaline Lake County, Illinois, the question of whether the village clerk shall be appointed rather than elected. So moved. Motion by Rikus, second by Abernathy. Discussion? Okay. Let's see, would this be a time to, I think, present some of the reasons, and, or should we do that, or, or not, since we already discussed it in the committee of the whole? I'm just thinking. Yeah. So, so this is a motion, basically, what we're gonna vote on is putting this question on the ballot as a referendum. This would go on the referendum for March, this coming March. The question of whether our clerk should be appointed rather than elected. And for me, in looking at the way that it went, you know, this came to the people, let's see, back when, it was two thousand thirteen, when our current clerk was being voted on. And so, it was kind of a little confusing. Here, you know, the residents were voting for a clerk, but then also raising the question whether it should be appointed or elected. It was a little bit of a, it should've been separated in that sense. And so, there's a motion here that we'll vote on to bring this to the folks again. And for me, the reasons are primarily twofold. One, is that the position of clerk, and, and I would be in favor of appointing, of having the clerk be appointed, for the, for two reasons. One is that the, the clerk is a, a position which kind of started many, many, you know, decades ago, before you really had the model that we have today, where you have a council manager type setup. The clerk was often, in, in small villages, you know, basically the de facto administrator of that village. And so, with the advent of larger villages, and now we have an administrative staffs, the, the job descriptions kind of blend over each other, and so, it's kind of an archaic position from that perspective, but also the area of efficiency. Many of the, if not all of the duties of the clerk could be easily absorbed into the full-time staff we already have, and so, we would save on the cost there, and also the efficiencies of just seeing the clerk response, clerk's responsibilities getting, getting carried out day by day here in the building. Okay? So, for me, that's a reason to support this. I don't know if anyone else wants to chime in on that before we call, call the roll, but I, I hope it passes and we get it before the folks on a, on an election where we're not also electing a clerk. So, yeah. Anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Rikus?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, a motion, please, to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of a real estate sales contract for the sale of Lot One in Block Two of the Lockloman subdivision, commonly known as four sixty Kilarney Pass Circle.
So moved.
Motion by Abernathy.
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes. Motion carries. Next up, a motion, please, to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of a real estate sales contract for the sale of Lot One in Block Two of the Lockloman subdivision, commonly known as four sixty Kilarney Pass Circle.
So moved.
Motion by Abernathy.
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion? Okay, this is a sale of some surplus village property. There used to be some public works items there, if I recall, and so, we are selling this surplus property.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Actually, this is a question for Mr. Haywood. When we sell this, where do those funds go?
They go into the Water and Sewer Fund of the village.
Both of the sales of the property go into Water and Sewer Fund?
Correct.
So, that could help fund Mr. Beauchamp's project, or help fund that project? Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes. Motion carries. Next up, along the same topic, a motion, please, to adopt a resolution authorizing execution of a real estate sales contract for the sale of Lot Twenty-five in Block One in the Lockloman subdivision, commonly known as Zero Kilarney Pass Drive. There is an address, Zero Kilarney Pass Drive. I did a double take there.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kim?
Second.
Second by Norton. Discussion? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes. Motion carries. And the final motion on my report regards PACE. The PACE bus, this is a motion, please, to adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding between the Village of Mundaline, the Village of Libertyville, Fremont Township, Libertyville Township, Shields Township, and the Lake County Department of Transportation regarding the Central Lake Partners coordinated transportation.
So moved.
Motion by Kim?
Second.
Second by Norton. Discussion?
Yeah, I was wondering if, John, you might be able to just give us a little bit more of an explanation of this?
Well, I will ask Mr. Flynn, who's been intimately involved with the township, I know, in putting this together, and, but from a very high level, this is a way of, I think, providing the same level of service in all of these areas that makes it a little bit more simple for the users of PACE. But I'll let Mr. Flynn maybe elaborate a little bit on that.
A few, a few months ago, they, the township supervisor from Libertyville, Kathleen O'Connor, was here and made a presentation. This is the follow-up to that. At this point, now, all of the documents are in place. The memorandum of understanding is the final document to be executed by all of the participants. What this does is take our current program that's, we've provided for thirty years, the Dial-A-Ride program, and expands it to, broadens the hours and the number of locations that riders can go to. Expands their access to medical facilities, shopping, jobs, and recreation, primarily, though, jobs and medical. It's a service that is used by age sixty and over and individuals with disabilities. This program is, been in effect for thirty years in the Village of Mundaline and the Village of Libertyville and Libertyville Township. That model has worked so well, the county wanted to try to expand that model through the input of the Central Lake County Partners. They received a grant from the federal transportation, a federal transportation grant, to pay for those additional hours and additional service locations. So, our arrangement with PACE will stay basically the same, and the utilization by the riders will, they'll have a larger area to, to take the bus to...
Okay, so it's an expansion. That's where I was looking for clarification.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Okay, and the final two items on my report, I just want to first address everyone, also everyone watching, regarding the storm. Just thank you for your patience, and just with the public works getting out there, it took a lot of time, but think about how much snow fell. It was just unbelievable. Kudos to the Public Works Department and to our residents. I've been monitoring social media, and for the most part, everyone has been very understanding and very helpful with others that were maybe displaced because of the power outages and everything. And also, before we get together again on September, on December 14th, a couple holidays coming up, first of all, Thanksgiving. I'm thankful that no one in this storm, we didn't have any fatalities, no injuries that were reported related to the storm, which is just fantastic at a town our size. So, I'm thankful for that. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone, and for our Jewish residents, happy Hanukkah. That kicks in certainly before we see each other again December 14th. So, that concludes my report. Onto the trustee reports, Public Works Committee trustee Russell.
Public Works has nothing to report, mainly because you took all my thunder tonight. You want to say anything else?
No, that's 16 to 19 inches. We pretty much covered that already.
That's about as good as it gets.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Committee, there's a few items on here. Trustee Semple?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I'd like to make a motion to accept the village's 2015 comprehensive annual financial report and management letter. Everybody should have received this document. It's a very thorough and very comprehensive, as it's called. And after I make the motion, and hopefully we get a second, we'll have Doug just give us a, you know, two-sentence description. If anybody has any questions on the document, go ahead and ask, but if there's a document you want to pay attention to as we start heading towards the budget process, this is probably the one you want to keep an eye on. And if you see anything that really jumps out at you as being wasteful or something you have a question on, by all means, ask the department head, ask Doug, ask Mr. Libado, ask the mayor for an explanation, and just to be prepared as we head into the budget process, which will be coming our way, basically, March or so. So with that in mind, I've got a motion on the table.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion by Semple, a second by trustee Norton, and in the discussion phase here, are we going to hear from John Contrera?
Yes.
Okay. Sir, do you want to go ahead and, the mic's on, and just give us your name and then your address if you so desire?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is John Contrera. I'm with BKD CPAs and Advisors. We're out in Oak Brook Terrace, 1901 South Myers Road in Oak Brook Terrace, Illinois. This is the second year that we completed the audit for the village. I'm here tonight to just kind of give a brief overview of the CAFR that Doug actually put together and address any questions or concerns that you guys may have on it. There's actually three reports that were, for which we provided input on, or an opinion, or some type of input. The first being what was previously referred to, the CAFR. That's the thicker report that hopefully you all would have received at this point. Just to get into a few specifics on the CAFR, page one of the CAFR, it's not actually labeled page one, but it is page one, and basically, this is our part of the CAFR. This is BKD's part. This is where we opine on the financial statements of the village. Happy to say that the village received what would be referred to as an unmodified or a clean opinion. This is the same opinion that we've issued in the prior year. So, good from that perspective, no changes there. I will point out one thing, that if you were to look at the opinion, second page, we do have an emphasis of a matter paragraph in there, and that's discussing the fact that the village had implemented the requirements of GASB statement number 67, a fairly significant standard in the current year, which relates to, mainly to the police and fire pension funds. It's more applicable to the police and fire pension funds. Since those are reported in the village's CAFR, the village was required to implement that standard and include all the footnote and required supplementary information requirements that come along with the implementation of that standard. Unless there's any specific questions on the report, the only other thing I'd like to go over then, along the lines of the implementation of GASB statement number 67, is the aforementioned required supplementary information. So, page 65 of the report is the RSI schedules. These are required by GASB, and this is kind of a big part of the standard. This, page 65 gives a pretty good overview of what the village's net pension liability is associated with these, with the two pension funds. And we see that the, just to point out, the police is at about 23.2 million, the fire pension's at about 6 million in terms of net pension liability. GASB statement number 68 next year is a very significant standard for local governments. And that basically states that these liabilities will now need to go on the village's books as opposed to, previously, it's really just been reported as a disclosure-type information where it's in the RSI. It kind of gives you a schedule of funding progress, but it's never really been on the financial statements. Next year, that changes. So, these significant liabilities, 29.2 million from the fire and police pension funds, and the IMRF piece also has to go on, and you could get a pretty good idea of what that number's going to be in the RSI, too. And this year, it would have probably been in the $7 million range. So, that total of about 36.3 million is going to be a liability that's going to be going on the village's books next year. So, I just wanted to make that clarification. And the village's unrestricted net position, now, this is only in the governmental activities of the village, so it's not really going to affect your general fund, it's not going to affect your water fund, it's not going to affect any of your individual funds, but it's just going to go on as an entity-wide liability. Currently, in the village's CAFR for April 30th, 2015, you're showing an unrestricted net position of a positive 15 million. So, with the implementation of GASB 68 next year, you can expect to see that number to be a very significant number, about 21 million in the red. So, just pointing out that that is a significant upcoming standard. Rating agencies are well aware of the standard. They've known where to find the information on the liabilities in the past and the RSI schedule, so, again, no significant changes there. But again, just to point out, very significant standard on the horizon. Were there any specific questions on the CAFR or any areas you'd like me to go into further detail on?
Well, the rating agencies, do you project that they, I mean, I assume that this change is going to affect all municipalities in Illinois?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. It's a very significant change, municipalities across the country, governments across the country. Again, rating agencies are well aware of the requirements. The best analogy I could give is previously, local governments were required to just report, if you just think of a 30-year mortgage that you may have on your home, the liability for that mortgage previously would have been, if you didn't pay fully for a month of your mortgage, that difference would have to be recorded as a liability. Now, what GASB statement number 68 is saying is that the whole mortgage has to go on the books. And again, it's just an entity-wide governmental activities liability. It's not affecting your funds. It's information that the rating agencies have been pretty familiar with. So, again, not, no huge surprises, and the village certainly isn't alone in terms of the funded status of the plans. It's...
I mean, do you anticipate rating agencies taking that into account and changing ratings across the board?
Not necessarily, no. Because, as a matter, you know, the rating agencies have been pretty well aware of the funded status of the pensions. Obviously, a very hot issue.
Right.
And they have been well aware of it in terms of the other disclosures under GASB statements number 25 and 26 that, or 27 that were disclosing the information in the RSI. And the only other thing I will point out is two other reports that we did issue, the first of which is referred to as SAS 114-115 letter. This is basically our communication to those charged with governance, and just kind of goes over how the audit went. And also, the latter part of the letter discusses some of the internal control deficiencies that were identified as part of our audit process. So, if you'd like to refer to that letter, and if there were any questions, I would be happy to address those. And we also issued a letter on, basically, compliance with the TIF, with the TIF 2. State of Illinois requires that you have a compliance audit done on the expenditures within the TIF, just to ensure that they're allowable and eligible in accordance with the state statute, and we had no issues with that report either.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. I think we have a motion and a second. Right? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Semple?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, Mr. Mayor, is the firefighter's pension compliance report. With that in mind, I'd like to make a motion to accept the fiscal year ending 2015 firefighter's pension fund compliance report as submitted in our board packets this evening.
Motion by Semple.
Second.
Second by Abernathy, discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Semple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item is a purchase order payment for the Carr Law Firm LLC, and this is pertaining to the SEIA legal fees that we are incurring as we basically fight our neighbor Gray's Lake in what we believe to be an improper annexation and zoning. So with that in mind, I'd like to make a motion to approve purchase order and payment in the amount of $23,581.3 for October 2015 SEIA legal services fee, as per the committee printout, as submitted within the board packet this evening.
Motion by Semple.
Second.
Second by Abernathy, discussion? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Semple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is the payment of bills. So with that in mind, I'd like to make a motion to approve the payment of bills as indicated in the governing body report for the period between November 10, 2015, ending November 23, 2015, for the amount of $3,733,274.13.
Motion by Semple.
Second.
Second by Abernathy, discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to bring up the top five items. I'm going to mention these this week because there's some rather significant dollar amounts here. We've got about $2.05 million, which we're paying as principal and interest for the village's three bonds that are outstanding. We're paying about 6.6, excuse me, $650,000 to Peter Baker &amp; Sons for the Cambridge Country and Ambria work, which I believe we went over a little bit at our last board meeting. We're also paying about $310,000 to Campanella &amp; Sons, which is for the street program number two, the project over on the south part of town, over at Clearbrook Park, Walnut, and it also includes the East Holly Street improvements. In addition, we have a water bill. Our Lake Michigan water bill is about 1.187.5 thousand dollars. And then, we also have about $90,000 we're paying to Malcor Roofing of Illinois for roof repairs on our two public works facilities. Those five line items total, basically, $3.3 million of the $3.75 million that we're paying.
Okay.
I have one question. Under Peter Baker, Mr. Boucher, under Peter Baker payment, does that include the extras that were approved?
Yes.
Thank you. So that's the total bill for the year? We won't see another one from them?
You'll see another one because you still have some retainage on there. So, we hold back money for the spring to see, make sure everything gets restored properly.
Okay, thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Yes, trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just wondering, out of curiosity, the Bosecki grant reimbursement is included in the bill report, but it comes up later? Do we have to say it in a certain way, that, you know, like we pass these contingent?
Well, that's subject to the, wait a minute. It's subject to being passed later on. Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, we have to pass it before we would...
So, we would pass the bill approval before we approve the grant reimbursement?
Right. If the grant reimbursement doesn't pass, then that bill wouldn't be paid as part of that bill list.
Okay, so it's just in there. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Semple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's not on the agenda, but I wanted to remind everybody at our next board meeting, we'll be, actually, we recess into the levy hearing, which will be taking place on December 14th. What is the process? We're going to recess into the hearing, and I'll basically have a script I'm going to read.
Yes.
To, for the legal process of posting the levy. The village board will then vote on it. We will convene the levy hearing and jump back into the board meeting.
Correct.
Correct.
Can I ask a quick, will there be public comment during that public hearing?
Yeah.
That's part of the levy hearing.
There will be public comment, and then, we will have discussion, I assume.
If the board, yeah, wants to, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We're still thinking about that.
[laughing].
I'm kidding.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're not obligated to discuss.
That is all for Finance Committee evening, this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, Public Safety Committee trustee Rikus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report, but I'd like to turn to our director, Director Gunther, and ask if he has any comments, especially about the involvement of the police department, and then to Chief Deputy Chief Yoder to see about any involvement from the fire department in our recent snowstorms.
Sure. Just as a kind of a summary, fire responded to 30 calls, while police responded to a little better than 40 calls just on Saturday alone. From a police perspective, those are things like trees down, power outages, cars in ditch, motorist assists, people needing general assistance. So, that was kind of a gist of the public safety response to just Saturday alone. Any questions on that? No, as was earlier indicated, no major injuries reported, no, thank God, deaths reported, which is really very important when you talk about the weight of the snow and the way that the snow came down. A lot of times, we do have medical issues with people trying to remove snow from their driveways when they have to do it so many times and it is so heavy. I say that so that as future storms come along, people heed some warning and get help when they need it. As a side note, we've got some busy things coming up. This is a busy time of year for us on the police side of things. Tomorrow, we've got our annual turkey giveaway, where we go to Ellie's, pick up our turkeys, put them together, and deliver those to about 30-plus families in Mundaline that can use it. On December 4th is our annual spaghetti dinner at the police department. Starts at 5:00 and goes till 8:00. That's also the same night as the tree lighting in Santa's Cottage beginning. And then, on December 12th, Saturday, is Shop with a Cop at Target. Again, we'll be servicing 50-plus families by the generous donations of many people in the community. So, those are some big events coming up for us before we see you again. Ben, did you have anything?
I just got one thing to add on the snow aspect. When people shovel, obviously, it is heavy, but also, when your snow blower gets stuck, don't stick your fingers in there. They tend to lose fingers real quick, and it's hard to find them in the snow. So, use a stick, make sure your snow blower's off. We didn't have those accidents this year so far, but we do get them. So, unclog your snow blowers with a stick or something beside your fingers. That's all.
Okay, just one question regarding the snow incident. Did we have to activate it all, and why, I don't know why, but it's escaping me. Our volunteer group where we have, thank you, it's the certs, in any way where we had any warming areas or overnight sleeping areas that had to be activated because people, for one reason or another, needed those services?
No, there was enough time. There were many people that were displaced at their own decision. With the power being out as long as it was, many, many people just went to hotels for the evening, because there was enough leeway, enough time to plan for that. Ben and I did have some conversations as we moved into the Saturday evening hours that should the power outages continue for going past 24 hours, we would have put that in play for anybody that needed it. So, we did discuss it, but thankfully, we didn't need to go that far this time, and I think it's just because of the length, and there was a lot of time for people to prep, and the roads got cleared quick enough by our fantastic public works department that people could get to the hotels if they needed to, so.
Okay. Just on a personal note, I'd like to thank the police and fire department and public works for the outstanding job they did during that incident. So, that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Next up, Community and Economic Development Committee trustee Abernathy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I have a few motions this evening. One is the, a motion to adopt a resolution approving the grant application for property at 610 East Holly Street, Mundaline, Illinois, under the Mundaline Economic Incentive Program. I believe this is the Bosecki enterprise agreement that we talked about earlier.
Motion by Abernathy?
One is the, a motion to adopt a resolution approving the grant application for property at 610 East Holly Street, Mundaline, Illinois, under the Mundaline Economic Incentive Program. I believe this is the Bosecki enterprise agreement that we talked about earlier.
Motion by Abernathy.
Second.
Second by Russell. Discussion? No one? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Rikus.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. And then last, I have a motion to authorize staff to prepare a resolution approving the grant application for the property at East Park Street, Mundaline, Illinois, under the Mundaline Economic Development Incentive Program in an amount not to exceed $40,367.50.
Motion by Abernathy.
Second.
Second by Russell. Discussion?
I have some.
Okay.
I just want to make sure I'm clear. What we're doing is, and I know that the applicants are here, so they could help answer We had set a limit of 25,000, which can be increased at the discretion of the village board, correct? And that's what we're being asked?
Correct.
Okay, well, it's Tina G., so Tina.
They need the mic put on. Oh, sorry.
It's just running quite a bit over.
We need to have your name and address if you wish, just for the clerk.
Sure. Phil and Tina Gilardi, we live at 1051 Evergreen Street in Mundaline.
Very good, thank you.
I knew there were things for new signs. Plumbing was quite a shock to me, what, a couple of bathrooms, being with no basement there, having to cut the slabs, have to bring all that kind of stuff in. I knew we had a limit. I was advised by some that, you know, you could ask and see what happens from there.
Okay. So I just wanted to say that I think we have increased our grants for other businesses. So for me, I don't see a big problem in something that's going to definitely benefit the downtown Mundaline area, and thank you for that.
Yeah, we're really excited, too. You guys are doing so much in that area that we just, we think it's a good time to get in there, you know? There's a lot going on, and we're looking forward to it.
Yep.
Hopefully, January will be good to go.
That's quick.
I'm hoping. We're paying rent. We need to get open. So, thank you.
Any other trustees have questions?
I have a general question that related to Tina G.'s, and if this has already been answered, I apologize. But even going back to Bosecki's, once, once this is approved and the money's been issued, how do we inspect to make sure that the village's money was spent on what it was allocated for?
There's coordination with the building department, and they, and there's a permit oftentimes in place.
There's a what in place?
There's a permit, oftentimes, in this instance, for those type of improvements. They've applied for a permit, plans have been reviewed, a permit has been issued, and there, I coordinate with Pete when there are inspections and when those improvements have been completed to then process for reimbursement, as soon as I receive the receipts, the lien waivers, et cetera.
Okay, so there, do we pay it then in increments, or all at one time?
We pay it all at one time when the work is completed.
So if there's work that is at the beginning of the project and work that's at the end of the project, the applicant has to wait until the end of the project in order to get paid?
You know, we haven't received that request yet. The request that we have received is for full reimbursement once the work has been completed, and we have not received any request from any of the past awardees to receive partial payment for, for completion of some of the improvements.
Whatever that request is, we have a way of checking it to make sure it's been done.
We do when we have.
Thank you.
That's all.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Rikus.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, January, huh?
Yep. Open.
All right, we look forward to it.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have a few businesses that have opened. We have Core Golf Incorporated at 1061 East High Street. This is seasonal golf instruction from November through April. It consists of private and semi-private, using hitting cages, putting green, and video equipment. Off-season, the space will be used for office work. So anyone that wants to tighten up their game over the winter, that's where to go. Then we have Optima Insurance Agency at 510 North Lake Street, and they sell auto insurance policies. Then we have Stanley Steamer, 200 South Shattle. Stanley Steamer is a US-based company that provides carpet cleaning, tile and grout cleaning, upholstery cleaning, hardwood floor cleaning, and air duct cleaning. So we have that. Chief Public Safety Officer, Chief, I don't know what we're calling you again, Eric, Chief Gunther, took all of my thunder, because I was going to talk about all of our spaghetti dinner and the tree lighting and Santa's Cottage opening.
Where is Santa's Cottage?
Santa's Cottage is going to be in the Plaza, I believe, correct? Yes, Santa's Cottage will be in the Plaza, Santa's Cottage and the Cookie Shack, Hot Cocoa Shack? Will the Hot Cocoa Shack be there, too? I think it's just over to the...
Yes, they'll both be there.
They'll both be there, okay.
Where exactly?
Almost, almost right across the street from the front door, on the Plaza, grassy area.
And are we going to have a tree there?
Yeah, there's a tree that's been installed this year.
I didn't see it.
It's pretty big. So yes, and there will be Santa's Cottage, and the tree will be lit there, but the lighting of the holiday tree is still at crack hour.
Crack Flower Park, okay. So that will be at Crack Flower. We can walk up to the spaghetti dinner at the fire station, okay. Police station. I'm not doing well tonight. And then, thank you all, have a happy Thanksgiving. We'll see you all at the best time of the year, Christmas.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, Communication and Marketing Committee, trustee Kim.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I've got a couple of things today. Right after Thanksgiving is Black Friday, but even better than that is Saturday, Small Business Saturday. So there's a little bit here about that. The Village of Mundaline, in conjunction with the Mundaline Business Alliance, is preparing to launch a Think Local Mundaline campaign to coincide with the 2015 Shop Small, Shop Small Business Saturday. So let's see here, so any interested businesses who want to join in, when, let's see, when companies are contacted, they'll receive. So from the village's side, we have these posters and flyers that the businesses will receive, where it says to think local first and buy local when possible. So these will be going out around town, in addition to stickers, and we have a place on our website that'll highlight the businesses. But could I turn it over to trustee Russell, if you don't mind for a second, to tell me what the MBA will be doing for Small Business Saturday? Sorry, do you want me to come back to you?
No, it's okay. The Mundaline Business Alliance, as of last Friday, and will be doing it this Friday on a scheduled basis, has been out knocking on doors of the local businesses, handing out the posters and the flyers. As you move around town, you'll find many of the stores have already put those flyers, put those posters up in support of Think Local, Think Mundaline. So there's about a dozen different people putting these up throughout town from the MBA.
Okay, so that's a partnership between the Mundaline Business Alliance and the Village of Mundaline. So if you're a business owner and you're interested, you can contact, it says trustee Russell, Melissa Norton, or Don Genich, who's the marketing person for the village. On another note of marketing, the Mundaline Police Department actually had a great Facebook post, if you don't mind me highlighting that for a second. Chief Gunther wrote a little bit about acknowledging one of his officers, Officer Turek, who, right, Turek, went above and beyond in helping a homeless person that had come into their lobby. Since pads didn't open until 7:00, Officer Turek stayed with her, and also actually brought his lunch that he brought from home and offered it to her as well. This post, which, you know, came out of the goodness of your heart, reached 2,626 likes as of today and 380 shares. And as someone who works in social media, I will tell you that the best posts out there that always do well are those that make people feel proud of what it is that they support, and here it is our police force. So good job. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, trustee Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no motions to make tonight. Do you have anything to add, Director Boucher?
Just one noteworthy item, that even though the weather is starting to slow down some of the projects, we are still active on the sanitary sewer project on Lake Street. So again, we advise that pedestrians and vehicles alike take extra precaution when traveling through that area.
Thank you very much, and that will conclude my report.
Okay, thank you. Other reports, does any trustee have any other comment, report?
Can I just ask a real quick question? Are they gonna, talking of the Lake Street and what we're doing, actually, this goes on to Holly, I think what you did in front of Maury's was fabulous. Are they gonna do lines?
Striping, yes.
Striping. Are they gonna do the striping?
Yes. We are trying to coordinate that with, because we have the same contractor working on our East Holly project as the main Holly improvement project, we're trying to coordinate that work with them, because they also have to do some pavement marking east of Seymour for the lanes there. So that's coming. We obviously need to let this weather kind of pass, so hopefully this week, we plan on getting out there, maybe as soon as Wednesday.
Okay.
But it could be Friday.
Okay. But that was fabulous, thank you. All right. That's all I have, I was wondering.
Anyone else? Okay, let's go to scheduled business. On the omnibus list, we have one item. Does any trustee wish to pull this one item? Okay. Then I need a motion, please, to pass the one item on the omnibus vote list. Motion by Abernathy, second by Kim. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Rikus.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes. Very good. Motion carries.